I'm hosting this meeting out of Spokane, Washington, the traditional home of the Spokane people, Spokane indigenous people, as well as the newly called Spokane people of the city of Spokane. I am, as many of you may know, the WSBA used to have its data backup quarters in Liberty Lake, but I have accommodated this basement bunker. It doesn't hold any data as the WSBA is emergency Eastern Washington headquarters and have this Eastern Washington official WSBA Eastern Washington gavel here with me. This should be a short but special meeting. I really appreciate everyone taking the time to be here. And with that, I will turn over to our first presenter, Kyle Chiketti and company from the mandatory malpractice alternative work group. So I may have gotten that name wrong.
Thanks, President Jim Dar. I'm going to just talk a little bit about our committee. It's Alternatives to Mandatory Malpractice Task Force. We've been working since late spring, maybe a little bit February, March time period, to consider alternatives, specifically alternatives to mandatory malpractice insurance. The committee has looked at numerous different states, what other folks have done, and has come up with a proposal. Today is a first read of the proposal. Traditionally, we do two reads on rule changes. And so if, after today's discussion, we will bring this proposal back or an iteration of it for a second read in September. So with that, we have Professor Hugh Spitzer and former Governor Michael Cherry that both served on the committee. We may have also some folks calling in who also have served on the committee the last few months. And I invited Professor Spitzer and former Governor Cherry to do most of the talking with regard to the background and the proposal itself to give the Board of Governors information about what we thought was a good alternative to pursue and for the Board of Governors to adopt. And with the hope that we may be able to implement this by the end of September. I know that's a tight timeline, but we'd also like to show to the Supreme Court, who's also considering mandatory malpractice insurance through the comment period that ends September 30th, that the Board of Governors is looking at this issue and proceeding forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Professor Spitzer and Governor Cherry.
So maybe I'll start off. This is Hugh Spitzer, and I teach at the UW School of Law. And I had the pleasure of serving on this committee on alternatives to the mandatory malpractice insurance. This committee, as you know, was put together by the Board of Governors last year after the board determined not to make recommendations for mandatory malpractice insurance that came out of the mandatory malpractice insurance task force. So, and the board was concerned about requiring insurance because of the expense and the perceived difficulty of getting reasonably priced insurance in some specialties and the fact that some lawyers are doing so little work that it might not make sense to require that they have insurance. So we focused on other approaches besides mandating malpractice insurance and wound up with this committee, which focuses on disclosing insurance status to clients when the lawyer's uninsured or underinsured. So this would be a new RPC 1.4C with new comments, eight to 14, and it comes from several other states, principally New Mexico. And it would require a lawyer either before or when a representation commences to provide notice in writing to a client if the lawyer is not covered by insurance at a minimum level. And then the lawyer would have to get written informed consent within a reasonable time. We went around on how much time to propose requiring to get the written consent, but we're trying to make this simple and not overly difficult for lawyers. So they've got to get the consent within a reasonable time. And then if a lawyer's malpractice insurance policy were terminated or lapsed, then within 30 days, they'd either have to have a new policy up and running or obtain consent from clients. The, and we really focused on simplicity. We considered including a kind of broad advertising disclosure provision and debated things like whether it ought, you know, billboards and TV ads and print ads ought to have disclosure of non-insurance. And we just determined that it was too complicated. We're trying to keep it simple. So in addition, under this proposal, as you see in the materials, certain lawyers would be excluded from the disclosure requirements, including judges, arbitrators, mediators, in-house lawyers for a single entity, government or private entity, and employees of governmental agencies. Also, lawyers who are only doing pro bono work for and or through an entity that provides insurance at the minimum levels. For instance, the Legal Foundation of Washington has an insurance program at a $500,000 level for volunteers that qualify legal providers. The minimum level that we're recommending is 250,000 per occurrence and 500,000 in the aggregate. We looked at lower levels like 100, 300, but in practice, 100,000 would often not cover the cost of a defense, which usually is paid from a policy first, plus whatever liability the lawyer might owe. And the difference between 100, 300 and 250, 500 is minimal. As I mentioned, Legal Foundation of Washington provides an insurance program at $500,000. In addition to these direct disclosures to clients, and we suggested some safe harbor language that a lawyer could use, although she wouldn't necessarily have to use that language. But in addition to the notice and the consent from the client, the proposed rule would require a notice on the lawyer's letterhead, on electronic communications blogs, and the homepages of a lawyer's website, not on tweets, not on text messages. So that's basically what the proposal is. Obviously, you can look at the details in the memo and in the proposed rule. Michael, do you have any other thoughts on that?
I just want to make a quick statement. I don't want to take up too much of anybody's time. But as many of you are aware, from when I was briefly on the Board of Governors, Professor Spitzer and I have respectfully disagreed on many issues with malpractice insurance. And today I come, joined with him in agreement that this is a reasonable proposal that is between not having any insurance requirement and mandatory malpractice insurance. It does not change the reporting function, which already exists. It adds to it disclosure to the client. And I think that it provides a way for lawyers who do not want to have malpractice insurance, if they still choose not to do that, to opt out and still have a means of protecting the public because the public provides informed consent to work with a lawyer without such coverage. I'm going to finish by thanking Doug Endy for all of the work he provided to the committee. Writing "rule change" appears easy at first, and then you get bogged down in the details. And Doug provided us tremendous guidance. He made us write comments, which neither Hugh nor I wanted to do. But I think the end result is a very readable, understandable addition to the rules that helps lawyers and the public. Thank you.
So let me just add a couple additional comments and maybe even suggest a direction for some discussion. And we should also thank Thea Jennings as well because she was hard at work for keeping us on track throughout the entire summer as well. So thanks to her and everyone basically on the committee that put in the hard work and put up with the Zoom meetings and the, you know, trying to figure this out in our new world. One of the comments that I received after we sent out the proposal was a concern from Governor Clark, actually, about having the disclosure in the email, which he thought was burdensome. And I know that the committee did talk a little bit about that specific issue and in terms of why should we have to disclose in an email to opposing counsel, perhaps, that we don't have insurance. And so I'd like Professor Spitzer or Governor Cherry, one of you to talk a little bit about that because we did discuss it at some length, and it was a consideration and a concern for some of the committee members. And it's certainly a concern for Governor Clark. So if you, one of you would address that, I'd appreciate it.
Michael, do you want to try that run?
Sure. You know, it's, there was a great deal of discussion about what's the right timing to present this information to a potential client, whether it was at the first meeting, when it should exactly occur. It's complicated by the fact that the attorney-client relationship is created in the mind of the client. And so this can occur very early on, even with the first time that the client reaches out to an attorney. I think in the end, we felt that we already see a large number of disclaimers in emails already. Almost everyone has the disclaimer saying that if you received an attachment in error, not to read it or not to use it. And so this is a fairly normal thing for people to put into their signature lines already. And so we didn't feel that it created an undue burden to add yet another line to that disclaimer.
Thank you. And so with that, President Jim Dar, that's our presentation. We would open it up to questions.
Thank you.
President Jim Dar, this is Russell. Can you add me to the queue?
Yes, Governor Knight. In fact, I'll put you right at the very top of the queue, right after I say a pleasant thing. Yeah, I want to reiterate some of the wonderful things that have been said about Doug Endy. I've said many wonderful things about him over the years, but since he's already had many wonderful things said about him, I'll just say as president, I've had the opportunity to interact with Thea a lot more than I did as a governor, and I've been very impressed with all her hard work for the organization as well. So thank you so much, Thea, for all the hard work you do for us. Governor Knight, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Jim Dar. I first want to say, I think this is a very good thing that we're revisiting this proposal. The board overwhelmingly rejected the proposal last year, and I think for a very good reason, because it was the wrong proposal. But just because one proposal is rejected doesn't mean that the entire concept or maybe the reasons for the proposal should be just cast aside. So I think it's good that we're looking back at this. And I want to just talk about, I think we need to iron out a few more details of it. So I want to talk about a couple of my concerns. I think informed consent confirmed in writing is certainly a concept that we're all familiar with. It's very appropriate here. I share Governor Clark's concerns about the disclosure on letterhead and disclosure in email. And I think the difference is informed consent confirmed in writing, that is allowing the client to make the decision at the outset of whether they want to hire a lawyer, very likely at a lower price, that doesn't have a malpractice insurance, or whether they want to go out to the market and hire a different lawyer, likely at a higher price. That's different than putting it in the letterhead. The letterhead and the email disclosure are really designed to embarrass and shame the lawyer into getting malpractice insurance. And I think those statistics sort of play out that where there's requirements like that, more people get insurance. But that shouldn't be our goal. Our goal as a profession shouldn't be to put people on shame or embarrassment if they don't have a practice that's as lucrative that they can afford insurance. We just shouldn't take that approach. I would discourage any of those requirements where it gets put in emails that obviously go to, you know, the courts, they go to opposing counsel. They don't go to the person that you're trying to protect, which is the client. The second thing that I think we should have a discussion about is the coverage limit. I saw in the materials for today's meeting that 95% of claims are resolved for less than $250,000. In the materials for the discussion last year, there's an additional statistic, and that is 89.1% of claims are resolved for less than $100,000. So, you know, most of these claims are not big claims. I think it would be worth discussing whether 100, 300 is appropriate and what the actual cost difference is between 100, 300 and say 250, 500. It might be significant to some lawyers, and I think we should be cognizant of that. Final thing I think we should have a discussion about is the retention requirement. I agree with the simplicity of the rule and the rules, and this doesn't really create uniform rules. So I think the RPCs require seven years' retention of trust records and like safeguarding client property. There's, of course, no requirement to retain a client file, but there's an advisory opinion, and it's obviously best practice. So the six-year requirement is a different number than either of those. I'd be interested in sort of why that's the number. Obviously, I do think that retaining it for the statute of limitations period is probably a good thing. But I also want to clarify, it could be retained electronically because that's just more common now. So something to discuss. And then on a process note, I want to make sure that our members have a voice here. We sent out an email saying the August meeting is canceled. Then we sent out another email saying it's a special meeting. When this was going around the first time, there was a lot of discussion. Members submitted their comments. And in fact, I think one of the reasons they overwhelmingly rejected it was members overwhelmingly rejected it. So I want to make sure we're not ramming this through too quickly, and I want to make sure members have an opportunity for input. So those are my comments, and I really appreciate this discussion. And hopefully, we can iron something out. Thanks.
Let me, let me.
Thank you. I'll let you jump right in, Governor Chiketti. Just want to say thank you, Governor Knight. And I want to remind everyone on the phone that people on the phone can press star nine if they want to raise their hand. And I will just let people know that after Governor Chiketti speaks, then Governor-elect Brent Williams-Ruth will speak, and then member and family law section liaison Nancy Hawkins will speak. And then I have Governor Peterson, and then I have Michael Cherry.
Hugh, please.
And past President Pickett.
Thank you.
And so I would like to have an opportunity for Professor Spitzer and Governor Cherry to respond to some questions that were just presented. And I don't want them to escape because they're important. There was discussion about the coverage limits. There was an issue, a discussion about the cost versus 100, 300 versus 250, 500, and we can provide you with information about that. And then, like I said, we did discuss the email and balanced that approach between having to disclose, not for purposes of embarrassment, but more for purposes of simplicity. And also, as Governor Cherry mentioned, you know, the mind of the client is what determines the attorney-client privilege and the attorney-client relationship. And so in order to address that, a safer approach was to keep it in the email. But we can get you the information about that.
Thanks. Okay, I'll just remind everyone, this is a short, special meeting for introduction. So just make everyone mindful of that when they're speaking so that we get as much comment at this time period as possible. Next, we'll go to Governor-elect Williams-Ruth.
Before I began my current life, I was working for the evil empire as an insurance coverage attorney. And I have concern with the setting of the coverage limits simply because of the fact that the issue was that they would be a self-consuming or wasting policy where the defense costs come against the total liability. And I actually just verified with one of my old clients that not every professional malpractice policy is a wasting policy. So if we have concerns about affordability, then I would recommend that we say you have to have $100,000 limits, but it cannot be a wasting policy such that defense costs have absolutely no relation or connection to what the potential liability would be. That's my other comment.
Thank you, Governor-elect. Ms. Hawkins?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. So first of all, following, I think, was Governor Knight about notice to members, this did not come out in time for me to discuss it with my section, the family law section. So I'm speaking for my own purposes as a family law attorney. My concerns don't have to do with the client relationship, but family law in particular faces a lot of frivolous complaints, both at the bar association level and threats for lawsuits from opposing parties. We deal with a lot of crazy people sometimes on the other side. Some of you know I'm being harassed and threatened by one these days, and it's not very pleasant. But it is a common threat to sue the other spouse's attorney for, you know, stealing their children, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to make sure is that any requirement for disclosure, I mean, this goes through, does not require that we give any notice to the opposing party or opposing counsel that we have insurance or that what the policy limits are, that we not be required to disclose who our company is, and that that information not only not be on an email, but that it's not discoverable in the underlying litigation. Otherwise, we will, I think, be really inundated with more frivolous lawsuits. Someone made the comment that a claim of 100,000 or so is not a large claim. And I would, to differ, a deductible even of 2,500 or 5,000 devastate a small family law attorney's practice. And so any lawsuits are potentially career-ending for family law attorneys. So anything you can do to protect us from more harassment from opposing parties, I'd appreciate.
Governor Peterson?
Yeah, first of all, I think this is a really good idea. So I'm very for the idea. I just have a couple of comments as to the details of it. I would definitely be for 100, 300, as long as the attorney fees do not cut into the coverage amount. So, and I think that's what other people have mentioned. And we have to remember, too, that just because you burned through insurance doesn't mean the client doesn't have a remedy. It just means now they have to go over the assets of the attorney, right? So it's not just as simple as if we don't have insurance, there's no recovery. It's simply not that simple. So I would make the argument that it should be the 100, 300, but the attorney fee should not cut into the policy limits. And then the other thing I would indicate is, you know, the intent here is really to make sure the public is aware that the attorney they're hiring does not have insurance. If we require the attorney to sign an initial, a provision within the retainer agreement saying, "I understand this attorney does not have insurance," we have met our objective. And I think anything beyond that in terms of letterhead or email is simply not increasing the goal that we're trying to reach. And it is, in essence, trying to shame attorneys and do things to attorneys that maybe put them at a disadvantage or cause additional problems with them without increasing or making the goal here being realized.
Thank you, Governor Peterson. Former Governor Cherry?
I just wanted to speak to the timeline, I guess, at the process. I absolutely respect getting the feedback of the members, and it's not in any way, I think, any of our intent to shortcut feedback. However, I'm very concerned that there is a formal request, I believe, before the Supreme Court to make a decision on full mandatory malpractice. And that's coming up. And my fear in this, and I've been driving and annoying Hugh and Kyle with this from the beginning, is that we have a short time as a bar, as members of the bar, to act and comment on this. Otherwise, I'm very concerned that the Supreme Court will take the proposal in front of it and act without our input. So it's kind of a balancing act between those two points. How do we respect the process and not get short-cutted out of making a presentation to the court for its consideration?
Thank you. Past President Pickett?
Thanks, Rajiv. And I'll kind of first off, direct some questions to Michael and to Hugh. And just so you know, here's a little precursor. If you don't know the answer, and you got to go look at something down the road here, this is an ongoing process. So I really appreciate it. Appreciate seeing both of you here today, too. After that debacle in Yakima, I didn't think this thing would ever come back again. So I'm glad that it is. But the first question I have is, what input are we getting from the public on this proposal, if anything? And the reason I say that is because we do all this talk and concern and express what we're worried about for lawyers, which is part of the equation. But we oftentimes seem to fail to bring the public into the discussion and let them know that we're about to do something to them that could have significant impact for them. So one, I just want to make sure somehow, some way, we're getting them into discussion and find out what we've done thus far to do that. I remember the gentleman very vividly in Yakima. The public member, or he was from the public, he came in. He was incredibly upset when this board voted down mandatory malpractice, and he expressed his desire to take it to the legislature to get a fix because he expressed what he believed was a complete failure of lawyers to implement something to protect the public. He had been a victim of malpractice where the lawyer had no coverage. So I don't know if he's been consulted, probably a good source to go to. Then the next thing I would ask is, what have we done to look at this from the perspective? Are we setting up a potential scenario where the most vulnerable people in our society are at the greatest risk of harm? And when I say that, what I mean is I see oftentimes folks that come to lawyers, they're, we almost are pretending a little bit like there's a bargain for exchange or some negotiation that's going to go on here between a human being that needs a lawyer and a lawyer who holds all the power. And in that discussion, the lawyer is going to say something to the effect that I don't have insurance, just so you know. And oh, by the way, a nod and a wink, I know you're desperate for representation. I know you need what I've got. Why don't you sign this disclosure here, and we'll move on and pretend like everything's good? And that, to me, seems like potentially people who are the most vulnerable and most in need are the ones who may end up becoming victimized by the potential, by the policy that we're looking at. So again, I had the question more directly is what have we done to kind of assess or look at that potential scenario? And then the third thing, and again, this is another question, is have we taken a look to see what the outcome may be on the lawyer side of this if we put it into play? Will we be encouraging potentially some lawyers to go with the disclosure? And when things are tough and decisions have to be made inside a law firm, maybe they're gonna be, they're gonna go without the coverage. And we're creating a scenario where that could happen. So we don't, we certainly don't want to be the encouragers of people not having the coverage to protect people. Those are my questions. The last thing I will say, and this is not to Michael or to Hugh, but to the new governors. I'm scanning the screen here, and this is to the new governors. This is what probably one of the most important, exciting issues that you'll get to deal with as a new governor. Because guess what? Those who have come before you have failed. They have failed to actually successfully implement some kind of protection for the public, albeit a small number of people by the, by the statistics. And you have this incredible opportunity here to grab this, grab a hold of this. And here's the thing you do when you implement something like a mandatory malpractice or a disclosure or something that protects the public. You actually do that sacred act of elevating the interests of the public above the interests of attorneys. And that very thing is what has made us a noble profession for years. So I would encourage the new governors to think about that opportunity that's before you. Thanks, Rajiv. Appreciate it.
Okay. Because I know, I don't want us to keep ping ponging back and forth. So the MMI group can hold on to those three questions. And then we will hear from Governor Stevens and we'll come back to the MMI group in case he has any questions he wants to add to that queue or comment. Governor Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my, my comments. I also have a procedural question. So my comments, first of all, I want to point out for the record that when we took this up in Yakima, I was actually greatly disappointed that we took an action with almost no discussion. And I don't think that was of value to the members or the public. And I was surprised that's what happened. Saying that, I would like somebody to weigh in on whatever the process is that's going on with the Supreme Court. My view being that if they need to take something up, I would assume or believe that the president could at least inform the court of where we are so that they perhaps allow us the opportunity to finish our process. As it relates to that, since this is before us any special meeting, I actually don't think this meeting should count toward full deliberation for both the members and the public. It is a special meeting. It is with at least some, some question about how much information has gone to the members that we're taking this up again. I would hope that in September, for our September meeting, a full and all out effort in preparation for that September meeting is made to both inform the members. And, you know, I will say, as usual, that means in every way possible, including information to minority bar associations, local bar associations, sections and committees and councils, and whatever we do for the public. And we take that up. And while I, what I'm proposing, I would then probably not be a governor, that we don't do a final action until the following meeting. And that is, again, to let everybody know and be sure everyone has weighed in. Now that, there may be people who say that doesn't work because of whatever the Supreme Court is doing. But I'm very concerned that even with this compromised position that I, you know, I, it sounds very, very good to me that you've, that things have been worked out, former Governor Cherry and Mr. Spitzer, you know, and I think that's great. But in terms of both notice and then making sure we've actually heard from people, I think that's very, very important. So I certainly don't want to see us take any action that, today, and I'm not sure it's appropriate at our September meeting. Because I do believe you need to make sure this is fully vetted. And finally, when we get ready, whenever we decide we're going to vote on this, that there is a full discussion by the Board of Governors before we take a vote. I would be very, very concerned if we met, somebody just moved, moved the question and then you vote with almost nothing in the record about where the governors were and why they decided to do whatever it is they decided to do. Thanks.
Thanks. We'll go back to MMI group, but I think I'm the one to answer all the procedural questions because I have all the procedural knowledge about the court. So last time we took this up, the board eventually directed myself to submit a comment in opposition to the, what I would call the free market model, the rule that was proposed, which is the free market model. And I will, I will say that that is the top most comment on the Supreme Court's website for this. So anyone who wasn't on the board or didn't get a copy, it's a public document that's filed with the Supreme Court and you can access online to see the WSB's official comment on this matter. I think it was well done. But the court's original comment closure date was in spring. Because of coronavirus, the court picked all their processes down the road and this matter to October, I believe. The MMI group, which was independently established, because what I did tell the court in the WSB's official comment to the court was that the Washington State Bar Association is in fact going to look at alternatives to mand, implementing the free market version of mandatory malpractice insurance. And that's what this group has been working on. I think there's some concern on that group, if I'm interpreting them correctly, they can correct me if I'm wrong, that by not putting forward a viable alternative, it increases the odds that the court will just implement the free market model of mandatory malpractice insurance. There is no requirement for the Board of Governors to have a first, second, third, fourth, or fifth read of anything of this type. This special meeting was a good faith effort on the part of the mandatory malpractice insurance group, not to just come in September with something, but to come to this board now, get some feedback so they can push it out to the members with any corrections they need to make or thoughts they need to make, so they can get lots of robust feedback for the September meeting. So this special meeting is an attempt to engage the board early and proactively before the September meeting comes up and the board may or may decide, may not decide to do something in September. If I'm incorrect about any of that, I'll let Governor Chiketti and the MMI group correct me. But we do now have Governor Chiketti, Professor Spitzer, and former Governor Cherry on deck for answering those, for all the questions that have been asked.
President Madhavam, I think you're correct in, in all of that except for the deadline. I believe the deadline is September 30th to submit comments to the Supreme Court. I'll turn it back over to Professor Spitzer and Governor Cherry for further discussion.
Sure. I'll just make a few comments on some of the really good questions that were raised. Governor Williams-Ruth had a, suggested a concept of a hundred, three hundred being an acceptable minimum, minimum if there's not a wasting policy. That's something that we didn't discuss. I think it's a really intriguing idea personally. I think it's a really good idea. And, and it's, it's worth considering. I imagine that we could probably try to get, and this is up to Governor Chiketti, we, maybe we could get the group together to, to think about that and also to figure out how to draft that if ultimately the board wants to go that way. It, it also is correct that eighty nine percent of the claims against lawyers are settled in one way or the other at below one hundred. But the, the earlier task force found that the cost difference in premiums between a one hundred, three hundred and a two fifty, five hundred is just a matter of a few hundred dollars per year. Notwithstanding that, I think that this idea is worth looking at. In terms of input from the public and Governor Chiketti can probably say more about this. I don't know that that was part of the, kind of the directive that we got. But it, again, personally, it seems to me that we ought to do some kind of a short description of, of what's cooking here that goes out to all of the members of the bar and at least to all the people who made comments because there is an electronic list and people who are interested in the, in the topic, such as that fellow who spoke in Yakima, I think that he's the person who actually made a proposal to mandate malpractice insurance to the court. Also, in comment on Governor Pickett's, or from President Pickett's comment about, you know, will the most vulnerable people be affected by this? Of course, that's true. And we've, we've tried to not have some kind of a two class system where low income clients have, have less protection than other clients. It is a concern. And it's a reasonable concern. And I think that's all I'll say. I don't know, Michael, if you have anything.
I, I really like the proposal on the, the wasting policies. However, we can spend a lot of time drafting that and I want to look at the reality. The reality as a solo is I can't shop around very much and the insurance guys who write for me write wasting policies. This market isn't as big as people think it is. And, you know, my costs, because I do, I, I work in a niche area, I do privacy, the risk is very high. My costs are very high. And for me to find a non-wasting policy, those costs go even higher. So we can spend a lot of time drafting around a non-wasting policy, but the reality is unless you're a big firm, you can't shop that. I want to talk about the most vulnerable because this concerns me as well. And to me, the answer, if you want to protect the most vulnerable, then you start striking exceptions. You don't assume that governments who self insure are going to do the right thing. You worry about the pro bono agencies that are not insuring. I believe that's where you really hit a lot of the most vulnerable, the people who in fact can't even afford a lawyer and who are relying on agencies. And then you would have to require that those agencies have policies. So, I mean, there's no perfect answer, even mandatory mal, even mandatory won't work because you will still have a list of exceptions that exclude those serving the most vulnerable. Again, we want to be really careful about having a, you know, destroying a good solution for a, a perfect solution that's not gonna, not gonna work. I think Governor Stevens and others have raised a very valid point. And, and I don't know whether we can approach the Supreme Court yet again and say, we need more time. Maybe with the pandemic, they're willing to give us more time because they've got other issues they need to address as well. But I don't know whether there was a motion made there to table this and, or maybe I'm getting ahead for, for Governor Stevens. But I think that's the issue we need to address first is whether we're, what are we going to do? And then we know what our timeline is.
If I could just add one thing, I'll just point out that under the proposed rule, nonprofit legal services providers would have to provide disclosure unless their employees and their volunteer lawyers are covered. And I am pretty sure that most, if not all of the, you know, the formal legal services organizations, that they, they carry policies, they just have to, like any other large entity.
Let me add a couple more comments before we start wrapping this up. I'm very sensitive to having this publicized and out to the sections and committees and MBAs and, and local bar associations. I think that's an excellent and necessary component of this. The committee, one, I think that's more of the responsibility of the WSB itself, not necessarily the committee. And two, we did not want to do that before we got it right. We didn't want to send something out that we knew that the Board of Governors was going to reject outright. And then, you know, then we've got a mess. So I think we, I think we may not have it correct exactly right. I think we're close. I, I think we can make some tweaks to this that would be hopefully acceptable given the, the comments that, that have been discussed today. And also, maybe this might be a thing for the Member Engagement Committee to take up immediately so that we can have even further discussion in the next month. All, and, and again, this, I am sensitive to the, to the deadline. I am not confident that the Supreme Court is going to move that deadline. And so that, that is the concern. And of course, that's a balancing, right? You know, we can decide that a longer discussion period is appropriate. We take the risk that we don't have our comments or we have some truncated comments about what we're going to do. We can always do that. I think ideally, we would like to hit the deadline and, and have some action. And then I think this proposal just moves the ball forward. We're, we're moving in the right direction. And I envision the, maybe we, we're going to continue with this committee. We've already discussed with the committee members that, you know, this is step number one. We should look on how this is affecting folks. We should keep in contact with the public. We're hearing that it's creating problems for, for people, assuming that we pass it. Then, you know, we need to adjust it. And maybe there's other ideas that we can explore as we move along. So during my year, I'm going to continue with this committee and we're going to continue to look at alternatives and other approaches. So this is an ongoing live, living, breathing committee that will, you know, continue to look at these issues. And I think that should alleviate some of the concerns past President Pickett mentioned where, you know, this is not just a one time thing. We, we want to continue to put this on people's radar screens and we want to continue to talk about this. And so he's right that with the new governors coming in, this is going to be a topic that we will discuss for some time.
Thank you, Governor Chiketti. I have only six or five minutes and thirty seconds left available for this talker topic. I have Governor Gavicki and then I have Governor Stevens. I, I hear a lot of too much and too little. That means it gears the policy to me at the moment. But Governor Gavicki?
Thank you. You know, when the triple LT program was created, we required them to carry insurance and that is not lost on the members of the Supreme Court. And when they look at us muddling around on this for now, I think we're about three and a half years into this subject when we start with the original task force. There are members of the Supreme Court that are frustrated that we can't get it right. And I think we ought to keep that in mind. Even if we pass this provision, I don't think there's any guarantee at all that the Supremes aren't going to say, you know, Idaho did it, Oregon did it, we're going to do it. So keep that in mind. On the wasting policy issue, my experience is that if you want to purchase a policy, my experience is that if you want to purchase a policy that is not a wasting policy where the defense costs are outside of the limits, you pay an additional premium. And that additional premium is going to be more expensive than just doing the 250, 500 wasting policy. Lastly, on disclosure, speaking to Nancy's points, you know, if you don't have insurance, it's already a matter of public record. It's on our website. So the fact that it's on your email or it's on your letterhead isn't adding anything that's not already out there in the public domain. So I, I don't think we should get hung up on this email and letterhead issue at all. Those are my comments, Rajiv.
Thank you. Four minutes. Governor Stevens?
So, Mr. President, I, I guess I'm, well, I'm going to move that we hold this over to the September meeting for action. I appreciate your comments, Mr. President, in terms of the timeline. And in holding it over, I would also hope it would be the sense of the governors to staff and everyone that we take all steps possible to ensure that we have broadly informed the membership in all kinds of ways of the action that we are pending, that we, that we then provide sufficient time at that meeting for comments and that the board engage in full discussion before it, it then votes on the proposal.
I'll second that.
Perfect. Okay. I have a motion and a second. I'm going to interpret, I'm going to do some interpretation because I don't think anyone's moving for this to act anyways. But that I'm going to interpret this, that we will table this discussion for now and the WSB staff will use all the great efforts to get communications. We will get all the great efforts to get communications out to the membership in conjunction with the MMI group on messaging about what it is that's being proposed and discussed. And we will resume this topic in September. Is that fair, Governor Stevens and Governor Bar?
Except that it should be known that we're tabling it for action in the September meeting. So people are very aware that something's going to happen in September or likely.
Sounds like, that sounds like a plan. I have a comment on that motion, I guess, from Governor, former Governor Cherry. But I'm not going to really entertain it, actually. No, no offense to Governor Cherry. It's just a matter of time and a matter of this is bogged procedural business. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by governors? Being none, I'm going to proceed to a roll call vote. Governor Angelov?
Aye.
Governor Clark?
Aye.
Governor Grabicke?
Aye.
Governor Kang? Governor Kang? Governor Knight?
Aye.
Governor McBride?
Aye.
Governor Peterson?
Yes, please.
Governor Chiketti?
Aye.
Governor Stevens?
Aye.
Governor Swagle? Governor Swagle? The motion carries unanimously with seven votes. Two, two non-votes. Now we'll move on to our next agenda item topic. By the way, I appreciate everyone's participation here and comments here. I appreciate our guests being here and the very thoughtful discussion about these complex issues. Our next topic is confirmation of the president, the left committee and board chair appointments. And with that, I will turn it over to Governor Chiketti for President.
Thank you, President Majemdar. And, and this should be brief. These are the remaining committee and board chair appointments that as president-elect, I have the honor of approving and submitting to the Board of Governors for final approval. The one comment about this, I think we, we deserve further attention in the future. And I talked with Governors Angelov about this, and I believe she's ready and willing and able to help assist over the course of this next year. It's always concerned me a little bit that, one, why I should be the one that appoints these folks, one. And two, rather than have the committee, the committees themselves choose their own chairs. And then two, of course, has the WSB done enough to ensure that we are reaching out to marginalized communities and, 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 and people of color to apply for these positions and work within their, their respective committees, boards to, to, to fulfill the roles. So I think over the next year, we're going to be looking close, more closely at these positions and also our, our, our way of handling this process. These-
Governor Chiketti, I deeply apologize, but it seems we may have had a procedural error just happened in that vote. We have muted Governor Kang and Governor Swagle, so they were unable to mute themselves, unmute themselves when that vote was called. Both have contacted United Tech saying they both cast their vote. But I think because they're muted on our end, they were not unable to unmute themselves. Please unmute them at the moment, just so I can record their votes properly.
Rajiv, this is Russell.
Governor Knight?
Oh, I think I was all disconnected as well.
Okay, so he, okay, all right. So, no, I got your vote, Governor Knight. I just didn't get Governor, Governor Kang's, so you'll remain muted. If someone either makes me administrator or unmutes them, I would be very pleased.
As the co-host, I can ask them to unmute, but I don't seem to be able to actually unmute them.
All right. Well, I'm just going to stick to the record that Governor Kang has communicated to me by text message that she has attempted to orally vote yes, and it was not able to be heard by us. So I will record it in the record as yes. And Governor Swagle, who also seems still to be muted, if you want to indicate to me by text, your vote, I will also record that orally and announce it to the public here, if you can hear me. Nope, he's unmuted and he says he votes yes. So now I'm sorry. Governor Swagle, we do have you and I do have your yes vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. And Governor Chiketti, I apologize for interrupting your business, but I did want to make sure the governors didn't all throttle me to death. Have, please continue.
Thank you. And, and those were basically my comments. So we'll be taking a closer look at this process in the coming year. But for purposes of today, we have, we have one, two, three, four, five, like six or seven wonderful candidates for chairs. So they're listed on your agenda. I would recommend their appointment so that they can get started on their year and planning and meetings.
Move approval.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion on the table from Governor Grabicke. And I have a governor from both Clark and Stevens of a second. Governor Swagle, you have, I see your hand raised. You wish to speak on this matter?
Go.
Great. Not seeing any other hands raised or any other waving at me frantically, I'll proceed to a roll call vote. Governor Angelov? Governor Clark?
Aye.
Governor Grabicke?
Aye.
Governor Kang, who I do see as muted. So I am just speaking slowly.
Rejoin.
Okay. I'll come back that direction.
She could try pressing star six. She should press star six.
There she did it.
Aye.
Governor Kang wrote aye. Governor Knight?
Aye.
Governor McBride?
Aye.
Governor Peterson?
I'm going to vote yes.
Chiketti?
Since they're my appointments, I'm concerned.
Abstention noted. Governor Stevens?
Aye.
Governor Swagle?
Aye.
All right, good. Slightly smoother that time. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the business of our special meeting exactly at 10:00 AM when our OPMA notice says we would adjourn. And so with my official Eastern Washington gavel, I thank you all for being here. Thank the members of the public who tuned in. I thank our liaisons and our guests, our staff members. And thank you for a good and efficient special meeting. I look forward to continuing these conversations too. With that, we're adjourned.